It's six thirty-three or whatever. Let's get started. You all have copies of the agenda. First of all, we'd like to say that Tom was moved up to a regular member by the Select Board on Tuesday night, I guess. So, welcome, Tom, as a regular member. And also Laura Donnelly was appointed as an alternate member. So, thank you for joining us, Laura. First thing on the agenda, we have a full board tonight, so LeAnn and Laura will be alternate members. And our regular members are Keith and Bruce and Brian and Tom and myself. So, I'll need a motion for the acceptance of the agenda or with changes.
Uh, move we accept the agenda as printed?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and we accept the agenda. All those in favor? Five zero zero. The next thing is election of Chair.
Dominate George Kerper as Chairman.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I move nomination cease.
Okay, it's been moved that George Kerper be elected Chair and the nominations be closed. All those in favor of that? Five zero zero. We need a motion on the Vice Chair.
I move Keith Ritchie. He's got plenty of experience.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Do I hear a motion that the nominations be closed?
So moved.
All those in favor in Keith Ritchie? Four zero zero. I'm sorry, that first one should have been four zero zero, zero one. I'm sorry. And Secretary? Motion for Secretary?
Uh, that'd be Debbie.
That'd be Debbie.
Okay. I have a motion.
Is there a second for Debbie?
Yes.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, now we dispense with that. Acceptance of three fourteen Planning Board minutes. Thank you, Debbie, for writing them. You all had a chance to read them.
I move we accept the minutes as printed?
It's been moved in second, and we accept the minutes as printed. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, next on the agenda is site plan review, public hearing for Aaron Fethke doing business as Fethke's Law Office. Mr. Fethke, could you have a seat? And, um...
Good evening, everyone.
Okay, the code enforcement officer has determined that site plan review application is complete. Fee's been paid. The staff signed off, and the water department also signed off on it. Received his email today, both Randy and myself. And if you look at the application, Aaron has right title or interest. He has a rental agreement for a period of May 1st, 2016 through May 1st, 2017.
I do plan on closing this August, so it'll probably be ownership at that point.
Okay. It's zone commercial, and professional offices are allowed in the commercial zone according to our land use ornament ordinance. The abutters were all notified, and if you bear with me, I'll give you a date on that. April 28th, all the abutters were notified. There was a notice of the public hearing appeared in the May 5th paper. So, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Does any members have a conflict of interest or a bias in the site plan? Seeing none, then the regular members will be voting members. We have a quorum, five members. And if you look at the site plan review for Aaron Fethke, you'll see that he wants to open a law office at map seven, lot forty-five, which is 167 East Main Street. Aaron, you want to tell us what you want to do?
I'm just basically moving my office from one location to another. Currently at, I'm currently at 29 East Main Street. I've been there for coming upon ten years. Basically outgrown the spot, probably for a few years now, just not wanting to admit it. So, moving to just a bigger location that's more comfortable and has an opportunity to hopefully grow some more in the future. Other than that, it's the same, just office.
Thank you.
Nothing beyond that.
Okay, if the board will take notice, there's a change in the land, in the application. In talking to Aaron, the signs will be located ten feet from the edge of the property line. I believe on the site plan drawing, he has thirty-three feet from the center line. So, it's ten feet from the, from the property line.
I actually measured, I actually measured ten feet from the end, from the road. Not necessarily the property line.
The edge of the pavement?
Yes, yeah, because there's a right-of-way that way. Be clear on that.
Okay, also should have a copy of where the property is located. Actually, a copy of map seven. Okay, I'm going to ask the board then if the voting members have questions pertaining to the land use performance standards or questions about the site plan review, the eighteen standards, and then that we can, you can ask Aaron at this time. Keith, do you have any questions?
Oh.
Okay, I don't. Bruce, do you have any question?
What's the wattage on that light? What type of light?
I haven't picked anything out. I don't know if I'm going to do that immediately, but I would say be no more than seventy-five watts LED if I can do it. Probably can do something like a little solar-powered thing, and I'll have it facing only towards the sign, not the road.
And direct it back toward the house.
Yeah, if I have, you'd have to sign at the house, not the road.
That was it. Oh, one other thing. Who's going to take over your office downtown? Because, you know, that main street is getting kind of vacant. We go through there at nine o'clock in the morning, and there's not a car anywhere.
I wait, I don't own that spot, but I did try to give the owner as much notice as possible, because I hate to see it vacant either, but I can't think of it, you know, two businesses that run at the same time, nor do I have the time, but hopefully be filled pretty soon. I've left it, certainly left it in better condition than when I found it, so I think somebody will make good use of it.
You can sublease it. Is that it?
I thought about that, but I've got enough on my plate not to do that to him.
Brian?
No questions. Nice, clean application. Thank you.
Tom?
Nothing really. It's just the only thing I see as changing is you're going to be putting a sign up front.
To the current location?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I, I think it's, most recent use is residential, so technically it's a change of use, so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom. LeAnn, did you have anything?
I did not.
Laura?
No.
Nope. We have no members of the public here. So, if there are no other questions, we close the public hearing.
I have one question for you.
I'm sorry.
What's the number of that main street location?
One sixty-seven.
No, the old one.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine East Main Street.
And the driveway permit?
Yes, MDOT permit. I should have had it by now. I don't know why. It's been more than fifteen days. Been asking. So, what I would ask the board is to approve this condition, I'm only turning that in before I, I open up my move. My estimated moving date is May 23rd. I certainly should have that. I don't know why I don't have it now, but...
I think you all have a copy of the application.
Yeah, I gave you the application.
MDOT.
I think that's a question anybody might have.
I tried.
Debbie, do you have anything else?
Yes.
Okay, let's close the meeting then at six forty-four. All right, if you all turn to page twenty-eight of your land use ordinance, we'll go through the general performance standards. As you all know, we'll need an individual motion on the four standards and why, why they haven't been met.
George, I'd like to group all four of them together and say they're not applicable.
The first four?
Yes. A danger, no material, no dangers, or hazards, not going to be any vibration that comes in there, and no offensive waste, maybe some hot air, but I don't think there's going to be a lot of loud noise either, unless there are some arguing. But it's, I think all of those are not really applicable in this application.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second that the first four standards under A, general performance standards, are not applicable. All those in favor? Okay, if we go to part B of that, which starts on page twenty-nine, probably the only one that's going to be applicable is number six, and then obviously number eleven. So, if you agree with that, then I'd take a motion that the only applicable items are number six and number eleven.
So moved.
Moved in second, that the only applicable items under B are number six and number eleven. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Take a motion on the signage?
Illustration on, oh, I move that the signage part of it has been met on here. The sign has sort of prohibited one there. Here's a good, the illustration of sign is very attractive, setback from the highway is good, proposed lighting on, it's not going to be offensive. It's not going to interfere with other traffic flow going, or interfere with traffic entering or leaving this place. It's not an off-site, it's not an off-site sign. We don't have to worry about exempt signs, and it's not going to be a flashing one.
And it's not a B and B?
Yeah.
It's been moved in second that number six signage has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, so number eleven, which reads all new commercial, retail, industrial, and institutional uses require a site plan review. Should be page thirty-four, I believe, on the, on the site plan review. Is that the wrong page? What was it, seven?
Seven on that one.
I know. Wrong in my notes.
We cut down the weight of that.
And the performance standards, section six, page seven.
I move the first standard has been met, preserve and enhance the landscape. Basically, no change except for the addition of a sign on the premises away from the road.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that preserve and enhance the landscape standard of approval has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. The second standard is relationship of proposed building to the environment.
Not applicable, no change.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that, yeah. Not change, no new structures, already there, no changes to the building structure.
It's been moved in second that relationship of proposed building to the environment has been met, the reason being there's no change. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Vehicle access. Let me say that the entire town staff has signed off on that with no comments.
Move that's been met because the application with the MDOT has been put in and we're waiting for it, so I guess we would approve that condition on receiving the MDOT permit.
Is there a second on that motion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Parking in circulation is number four.
I move that's been met. There's a circular driveway and a parking pad, and by the picture that's been presented with the application, that they both seem long enough, and the parking pad certainly seems wide enough to accommodate any necessary vehicular traffic and parking.
I think you did have parking along the side. I mean, there is room for parking beside that pad, isn't there?
If we had to.
Yeah.
Most of the time, it's going to be two cars there.
Yeah. Okay, was that seconded, I'm sorry?
No, Tom did.
Tom did. I'll second. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Surface water drainage is number five.
I move that's not applicable because there's no new construction going on.
Something better.
It's been moved in second that surface water drainage is not applicable. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Existing utilities, said that the water department signed off, and also Howard Clark from the wastewater division signed on.
I move that's been met because of the sign-offs from the town personnel.
I'll second. It's been moved in second. That's been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Advertising features.
I move that's been met. The sign, there's a picture of it with the application, is certainly appropriate and non-offensive, and the lighting will be seventy-five watt bulbs probably and facing away from the road, so as not to interfere with traffic.
Someone want a second to that?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Number seven, advertising features has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Eight, special features of the development.
They're not any, they're not better than they are.
No, not.
Okay, not applicable.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second that number eight, special features of the development is not applicable. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number nine, exterior lighting.
I move that's not applicable because there is no exterior lighting on the building.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that exterior lighting, number nine, is not applicable.
Just letting you know, there is some porch lights, and I think there's a floodlight on the back porch that might face out a little bit, but nothing that's not normal with residential.
No standards or anything with...
Nothing crazy, just want to full disclosure.
All right.
Let me modify that to say that I think it's applicable, and it's met because there's no additional exterior lighting to what's currently there, and nobody's complained about it before, so I'm sure they won't now.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved in second that it is applicable, but it has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number ten, emergency vehicle access.
I move that's been met. There's a circular driveway, and Bud Rivers has signed off, and so has Andy Webster and Adrian.
It's been moved in second that number eleven, I'm sorry.
Number ten.
Number ten, emergency vehicles, standard has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Municipal services.
I move that's been met because the appropriate town personnel have signed off.
Is there a second on that? I'll second. It's been moved in second that number eleven, municipal services, that everyone has signed off. It's been met and seconded. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Water pollution.
I move that's not applicable because there is no new construction.
Is there a second on that? I'll second. It's been moved in second that number twelve, water pollution's been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thirteen, onsite water supply.
I move that's been met, the town water company has signed off.
Second.
It's been moved in second that thirteen onsite water supply has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number fourteen, which is soil erosion.
I move that's not applicable because there's no new construction.
Is there a second on that? I'll second. It's been moved in second that number fourteen, soil erosion has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Fifteen, septic disposal.
I move that's been met because you're on the town water sewer, and the appropriate personnel have signed off.
It's been moved in second. Septic disposal has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Sixteen, adverse effect.
I move that's been met because there are no adverse effects affecting scenic or natural beauty or wildlife habitat or property values.
Okay, it's been moved, and is there a second on that? I'll second. Tom's second. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Last one, financial capacity and technical capacity. Is it applicable?
I move that's applicable, and it's been met because the applicant already runs a, the same business at another location, and he's done it successfully.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom's second. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Air quality.
I move that's not applicable. There's no new construction.
I'll second that one.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, I'd take a motion that the land use ordinance, all the standards have been met.
Site plan review.
I'm sorry. Site plan, yeah.
I make a motion that all the applicable standards in the site plan review ordinance have been met with positive finding.
I'll second that.
Let me go back. I don't think I ever got one on the land use. Right, so let me have one on the land use.
Just change the wording from site plan review to land use.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second that land use standards have been met. All those applicable ones. All those in favor? Okay, all, all this standards for the site plan review, have they been met?
I move they've been met. All the applicable standards have been met.
Is there a second on that one?
Second.
It's been moved in second that all applicable standards of the site plan review have been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. How about a motion on the entire application?
I move we approve the application as presented, and with the caveat of the MDOT permit.
With the condition of the...
Condition, thank you.
Second on that?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, the site plan review or application, all standards have been met, with the condition that the MDOT approve the entrance permit. All those in favor? Five zero zero. See if I've got two applications here we can sign. You have one, Randy? Okay. That's a file copy, I think, Randy, isn't it? Aaron, this copy will be yours, and bear with us for a couple minutes.
Sure.
Randy, did you have anything you want to report while?
The only thing, I don't have anything. I've had, I've had a full three command required of our site plan, and we have not achieved anything strong in terms of our site plan, and it's been so. Everything right now, we just, I'll get it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you folks.
See if you enjoy your new location.
Hope you're successful.
Wish me luck, thank you.
See if you can find somebody to fill your other building.
Keep the vitality of downtown, keep that the businesses are moving east.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
The only other business I have, and I think I put it all in your boxes, was a revised shoreline zoning ordinance. And what happened? It was approved by the state with one condition. This letter just came on April twenty-sixth. What we were able to do is, as Bruce pointed out, I think, get rid of a lot of that timber harvesting rhetoric that was in the site plan, or was in the shoreline zoning ordinance, and the state went along with that. The other condition of approval. And when I copied it, and nobody else picked it up, I guess, and it's not your fault, it's definitely mine, there should have been a section in there, and we'll have to put it in for this year's annual town meeting. The section should say, "An approved plan for expansion of a non-conforming structure must be recorded by the applicant with the registry of deeds within ninety days of approval. The recorded plan must show the existing and proposed footprint of the non-conforming structure, the existing and proposed structure height, the footprint of any other structure on the parcel, the shoreline zone boundary, and evidence of approval by a municipal review authority." So we'll have to, anybody coming, we'll have to put that in there. And it'll be approved at the next town meeting, hopefully. Otherwise, it reverts back to the, the state.
Yeah.
Enforcing it, so. That's all I had under other business.
That's new, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it is, Bruce. Yeah, I don't remember ever insisting that somebody record that with the registry of deeds. You would know better.
I forget.
No, no. Does anybody else have any other business they want to bring up tonight for us? Which one was that? No, you should have a copy of that song. Yeah. If not, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? Okay, adjourned, adjourned at seven oh nine.